Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the Joint City-County Commission Meeting. And I would ask you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are near to the door. And with that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda on the county side.
One moment, please. We need to take roll call.
Oh, excuse me. I would establish that there is a quorum on the Minnehaw County side. Would you do roll call, please?
Hi, Berger.
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Kerski?
Here.
Can I get a roll call for the city council, please?
Council members McCurus?
Here.
Nicer?
Here.
Selberg? Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Baranko?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
We have a quorum.
And the county has a quorum. Look now for a motion to approve the agenda on the county side.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Hi, Berger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Could I get a motion to approve the agenda for the city?
So moved. Jensen?
Second call.
Moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Council members McCurus?
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item number one is a joint budget hearing for Metro Communications. Scott Mann.
Good afternoon. Scott McMahon, Director of Metro Communications. Thank you, commissioners and counselors, for giving us the opportunity to come in today and provide you with some information about Metro Communications and our 2023 budget. Metro Communications has 57 staff. We're authorized for 57 staff. We have an administrative staff of a director, deputy director, a business manager, technology coordinator, a quality assurance coordinator, a training coordinator, and two division supervisors. We have seven floor supervisors, and we have nine advanced communication operators, which serve as a shift lead as well as training staff. And then we have 33 operators, and we have a part-time business support services and a five temporary staff that help with administrative things as well as working on the floor. Some of our 2021 accomplishments that we'd like to share with you tonight is the City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County approved funding to include Metro Communications as a component to the City of Sioux Falls Public Safety Training Campus, which is expected to be completed in October of 2003. We are very thankful and appreciative of the city council and the county commission for recognizing our need at Metro Communications to expand our spaces that we've been in for the last 40 years. So the time was due, and we appreciate very much that opportunity to become part of that project. Metro Communications was approved for four additional operators in 2022 through 2023, and that was provided to us through a state 911 funding opportunity. In total, that is about a $630,000 funding opportunity for us to hire those four positions for two years, fully funded. The caveat to that is that we do have to be full-staffed before we can hire these additional staff, because it was truly meant to be additional operators for our agency. We're working on that. We are in a time or period of time where we're calling it the great resignation period, and as a result of that, we have the same struggles that many businesses are seeing today. So but I'm confident that by December of this year, we'll be able to hire these four positions. So looking forward to that. The next item for more accomplishments from 2021 is Metro Communications successfully completed our eighth reaccreditation as an International Academy of Emergency Dispatch Accredited Center of Excellence. So it's referred to as ACE, Accredited Center of Excellence. Metro is only one of six agencies in the world to have accomplished that. And the reason for that is we participated in the Emergency Academy Emergency Dispatch Accreditation Center of Excellence program way back in 2000 when we became an ACE agency. And as a result of that, there's been multiple agencies after that that have come on board. But to this date, nobody has done that, or I should say, only five other agencies has done that six times. So it's pretty, pretty unique. And then also, Metro transitioned to a continuous posting process to expand our recruitment opportunities. Our recruitment team reviewed over 280 applications last year for employment with our agency. That includes interviewing and testing of over 200 applicants. Our retention improved with only two full-time employees resigning last year. So we had a great year last year as far as retention and as far as recruitment. This year is a little bit different story, but we're working very hard to make sure that we keep our positions filled in our agency. And already this year, we have filled roughly 10 positions. So with our October class that we have starting, I'm confident that we'll be back to full staff with our October class. So let's talk about our growth in 2021. From a telephone call standpoint, you can see that in 2020, we were at 332,000 calls. In 2021, we were at 337,000 telephone calls for service. So that's a 1.5% increase. And then on the 911 call side, in 2020, we had just over 100,000 911 calls to our agency. In 2021, that increased by almost 5,000 with a 5.28%. So 105,671 911 calls in 2021. Non-emergency calls, in 2020, we processed about 167,000. In 2000, or excuse me, in 2020, 167,000. In 2021, 171,000 non-emergency administrative-type calls. So again, another increase. We do have a decrease in outgoing calls. There's a number of factors that could be involved in that, but I suspect one might be that we had fewer pocket dial type 911 calls, because we do have to call every one of those back. So we might have had fewer of those. And then in addition, with our partner agencies, I think we're using our technology to a better use. We're texting, we're sending CAD messages, those types of things that don't necessarily have to be done over a phone call, but they can be done through technology. So now we'll talk about our growth pertaining to calls for service. Now, that's not telephone calls for service, but that's a call for service that requires law enforcement, fire, or an EMS response. So out of that roughly 337,000 calls that we received for telephone, we're going to send 259,678 calls out for service to our police, fire, and EMS. So there was, in 2021, there was an increase. We went up to 267,779 calls, so about a 3% increase in those calls that were relaying to our partner agencies. Law enforcement, you can see there was an increase there of about 3,000 calls, or a 1.66%. Fire, increase, slight increase, just a few hundred calls, about 2.3%. And EMS, call for service, 10%. So next, I want to talk about call-answer time and text messaging. I mentioned that across the nation, there's a struggle right at this point in time for public safety answering points such as Metro to retain staff. We're seeing a lot of agencies that are working at about 50% capacity with their 911 communication operators, which means a lot of operators across the nation right now are pulling double shifts, working, you know, all kinds of overtime and so forth. And as a result of that, in some communities, as I read professional publications, I'm seeing that in some communities, response time, or even being able to answer that telephone call, is taking minutes for that to happen. And then it's taking minutes longer after that for somebody to dispatch a resource. Fortunately, here in Sioux Falls, we are maintaining national standards, and we are dispatching resources in a very timely manner. So as we look at this, call answering time and text messaging, so 89.93% of our 911 calls are answered in under 10 seconds. The national standard is 90% in under 15 seconds. So we're almost, we're ahead of national standards in that regard. So the next point is 97.6% of all 911 calls answered in under 15 seconds. Again, so we're, we're ahead of national standards in that. And then the last one is 99.11% of all 911 calls are answered in under 20 seconds. The national standard for that would be 95%. So again, we're processing the majority, 99% of our calls, our 911 calls, in less than 20 seconds. And that's, that's something we should be really proud of in our community. So then, last year was the first year of texting to 911. That's a component of Next Gen 911 that we opted to have here in Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County. And you can see from March through December of 2021, there were 377 sessions. So a session is a condition where a member of the public sent a text to Metro. So that equals a session. So as we have conversation with that person from the public, each message back and forth is counted. So out of those 377 sessions, we ended up with 1,981 messages coming in and 1,792 messages going back out to the person who was texting us. So I suspect that we'll continue to see that number grow. Some people just prefer to send a text versus making that call to an agency. So I'm looking forward to report back to you at the end of 2022, and we'll see what happened to that number then. So in this budget sheet, I'll probably just go through the, some of the lines rather than each line. But in 2023, which is the blue section, described as our proposed budget, you can see that the state 911 surcharges that we received totals about $2.76 million. And then the city contribution is 2,000, excuse me, $2,093,815. And then the county contribution, line three, is $697,937. Line four, right below that, is the $87,410. We do provide police dispatch services to the City of Brandon, and that would be what that number represents. And then there's additional services beyond that. One item that you'll notice is the blue, $342,779. That's that funding opportunity that I talked about with those additional operators coming from the state. So that is in there as, as revenue. You can look down at our expenses, and you can see that with personnel, total expenses ends up being $5.3 million. And that's about 89% of our budget to, to pay for our staff, to provide them the benefits that they deserve, and cover all those personnel-type matters. So then you can see our operating expenses below that. There's some additional ones or new items in there that are in blue. You can see that, like, professional services has gone up, insurance has gone up, repairs, supplies, and also utilities. Those are all things as a result of moving into the new facility and then having and maintaining two facilities. So we'll have our primary center, and then we'll have our backup center, which will stay and exist where it is today. So as a result of that, there's going to be more maintenance contracts. There's going to be some additional items to be insured. And there will also be some more licensing that'll need to happen. So that's what those numbers represent. So in sum, our expenses will be $5,999,000, and our revenue was $6,590,000. You may notice towards the top on about line three, that the percent of change was 8%. If you look back at 2022 in the yellow, you'll notice that it was 15%. So prior to that, we went through a couple of years of 25% increase for the city and county. And the reason why is because we hired four additional operators back in 2020. So we are now coming down from that 25, 25, 15, and now we're down to eight. So we're trying to only ask for the funds that we need to support our agency. We have to think about the future as we move into our new facility and as we maintain our current facility as a backup center to make sure that we have enough councils to provide for our business on a day-to-day basis. We have to start also thinking about additional police council. I'm going to give you some information here coming up, but our staff working at those two councils, Police East and Police West councils, are, are at a maximum amount of workload that they can handle. So we need to start thinking about additional police council in '24. Renovations to our current facility. Once we move into our new facility, we need to do a few items of repair at our current center, again, to make sure that we have the appropriate number of councils, appropriate number, appropriate space to do our business, and, you know, to keep technology updated, that type of thing. Replacement of radio councils by 2026. We anticipated that would be a cost to us after visiting with our vendor. Those costs should be covered through maintenance contracts. So that's good news, because that would be a relatively large number that now we don't have to be concerned with. And then additional fire council in 2026. Again, just trying to keep up with the growth of the city, the growth, the population growth, and making sure that our partner agencies, police and fire, have the timely dispatch so that we can get those calls for service out to them. So this chart, you can see, again, it's titled at the top, Police East, Police West. These are our councils that handle all the radio traffic within the City of Sioux Falls. So what you're looking at in these charts is it's a percentage of time related to agency occupancy. And in our, in our business of call handling, call-taking, generally, you don't want to have an operator busier than 85% of the time. So if you said, in an hour's time, you've got 60 minutes, if you're busy the entire 60 minutes, that'd be 100%. What we're striving for is less than 100% of busy time. So maybe out of that hour, maybe more like 45 minutes is busy time, or 50 minutes is busy time. And again, this is a standard that's in place through all kinds of different call centers, but it also seems to fit in the PSAP environment. And what we're showing here is the agency, or excuse me, 157 is described as our, our number of push-to-talks that are less than that 185 push-to-talks. So once you get 185, you're at that 85% occupancy. So we want to be less than that 85% occupancy. So if you look in the green at the 157, we'd like to work in that area about 70% of the time. So if you're seeing a number of less than 70%, we'd like to say that that is beginning to move us into the next category, which means the operator's becoming busier. We'd like to be at 70% of the time or more. We'd like to be at less than 157 push-to-talks. A push-to-talk is every time you make a radio transmission with an outside agency. So then you can look at the middle column, the yellow-colored column. And in this column, we'd like to be at 30% or less, for the most part. You can see there's times of the, the day where we are way more than 30%. And then the last column, the 185, which means that the operator's essentially busy the entire time, we would like to see that at 15% or lower. Again, as you look down the chart, you can see that there's times where we're higher than 15%. So I know it's, it's a lot of data there that you're looking at, but, you know, I wanted to present it in a way that would be short, but at the same time, try and provide you with a diagram that would explain why we're asking for additional positions in probably '24 and '26. So then the next chart is just a heat map that makes it even easier to look at. So again, we're looking at, trying to stay under 185 push-to-talks per hour. You can see from about, of 2:00 in the afternoon, actually 12:00 in the afternoon through about 9:00 at night, there's quite a few red areas there that we're way above the 185 push-to-talks. So again, just a quick diagram chart to point out those times of the day when we are very busy. So then, just to recap our budget summary, again, 911 surcharges, $2.7 million. Other revenue sources, $506,000. Total external revenue, $3.2 million. And then you have the City of Sioux Falls contribution, $2,930,000. Minnehaw County contribution, $697,000, for a total revenue source of $6,590,000. And then again, you can see the expenses of personnel, $5.3 million. Operating budget, $616,000, a capital of $25,000. So total expenses, $5,999,679. With that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Scott. We're going to start with, since this is a public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that has questions or comments on this budget before the council and the commission comment? Seeing none, I would, is there anyone on the county commission or the council that would like to comment? Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So where are we at with the telephone surcharge? Is that a declining amount that's happening? And is the state going to audit the, all the cellphones and stuff to see if we're actually collecting what we should?
Sure. Commissioner Barth, the, the telephone surcharge is relatively flat and has been for a number of years as far as, you know, the amount that is generated in the state. In the state, we generate about $13 million a year from telephone surcharges, but the cost of doing 911 business in the state is about $28.5 million. So we're about halfway there as far as the, the, the number of, or the amount of funds that come in for surcharges and the cost of what it is to do business. So the $1.25 surcharge tax that's on each one of our phones these days has been in existence since about 2017. I have not heard any information about trying to increase that. If you look at, at our 911 business, at just about every PSAP, it's about 33% of our workload that involves 911 calls, and the other 60-some percent is day-to-day business of managing radios, taking administrative calls. So there's always that concern amongst our legislators of how much do they pay towards a PSAP? Is it the amount of business that's being handled from a 911 standpoint? Or is it the total cost of running that PSAP? I will say that this past year, the 911 Coordination Board felt like they had enough funding in their, in their general fund, that they felt that they needed to provide some money back to the PSAPs. And they chose to allocate about $4 million back to the PSAPs. So that was much needed, and we, we did get just over $1 million of that $4 million worth of funds. So I hope that answers the question.
Councilman Nicer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have three questions. The first is, keying off of what Commissioner Barth had said. Just out of curiosity, do we know in other states, or if there's a best practice or an average of how much from, from a telephone surcharges?
Yep.
That, that there's a percentage, like, for example, in other states, is it 80%, you know, that it covers the PSAP cost? Is it 20? Are we in line?
So out of the $1.25 that I mentioned, we actually get about 87 cents of that back to the county that it was collected in. The 911 Coordination Board keeps a certain percentage of that, and so I wanted to make that clear first. As far as what other states collect for surcharges, it goes anywhere from about 35 cents per line up to over $3 per line is the highest that I've seen. So there's, there's just really no set equal formula out there. Just every state is different. Of course, that depends on population. If you're a high-populated area, there might be more surcharges to collect.
Yeah, but I just, even like a percentage of how, you know, of the total pie of, of telephone surcharges collected, does it fund 50% of the PSAP cost, 20%? Or is it just all over the map?
It really is kind of all over the map.
Okay. And then, as far as your overtime number, you budgeted like 5.5% or something like that for your 2023, for your cost of overtime? With, with being short-staffed, is that, is that going to be sufficient? Do you manage through that? Do you just have less, you know, maybe just a little less staff certain times, or?
Well, I always choose to be optimistic, and I'm going to hope that there'll be less need for overtime in 2023 because of the fact that I hope that we're, we're full-staffed. I'd love to be full-staffed the entire year. We're doing everything we can as an agency to recruit individuals that want to serve the public, that want to become involved in public service for the right reasons, the right motivations. And we hope that those people will stay in our agency for a long period of time. And as far as that, offsetting that overtime number, obviously, when we don't have the full staff, there's, you know, the insurance, there's savings there. There's savings in full-time wages and benefits, so that does offset that overtime. But I, again, I hope to not have to use overtime for that purpose of filling vacancies.
Okay. And then, thank you. Finally, the, you talking about having another police council? I assume that would mean, would that be another dedicated FTE? And then you would do, do split it into three, for example, Police East, Central, West, or something, or?
We've had some of those discussions with the Sioux Falls Police Department in the past, and we intend to have more of those discussions prior to 2024. But if we add a council to serve the Sioux Falls Police Department, it takes five to six full-time positions to operate that council on a 24-hour-a-day, seven-days-a-week business schedule. So every time you add a council, we need five to six operators to man that council.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, thank you. Scott, you've, you've talked a lot about 57 allocated people. And you talked about bringing new people on, recruiting. But I don't think I heard the actual number of people you have on staff today.
Sure. So today, we are at, we're four short. So not counting the grant-funded positions. So if you take 57 and you minus those four positions, we'd be at 53. So we're four short right now, so we're at 49 total in the agency.
Okay. Well, last question. Could you remind me on how the new equipment for the new Public Safety Trading Center, how was that funded?
So the furniture, fixtures and equipment, we had an allocation from Minnehaw County to spend $2.15 million to pay for the FF and E. But now, keep in mind, we did receive some grant funding from the State of South Dakota to pay for the entire telephone system, so that's being handled from them. And then we also received grant funding from the 911 Coordination Board to pay for four extra radio positions, which was about $258,000. And then we also received grant funding from the Coordination Board to pay for four extra councils, which is about $100,000.
Thank you.
And I have two things. First, congratulations on your receiving the eighth reaccreditation, especially when you think there's only six of those in the whole entire world. That's quite a feat. So congratulations to you and your staff on that. My other one is, and this is probably too early to know, but since 988 has gone online, have you seen a change in just the one month that we've had 988? Or will we need a whole year of data to recognize if that's changed your data at all?
Yeah, so I think it is a little bit early to, to look at that data, but I think, you know, by around the first of the year, we'll have a better assessment of what that information is. But I do want to say that I strongly support the 988 number. We've gone from a 10-digit number that people have to remember to now being able to remember a short number when they're in need of mental health assistance. And I think it's just very important that those, those people receive the resources that they need from the proper channels. And I think with the 211 Help Center managed the 988 support, I think that there's definitely going to be staff that are highly trained in mental health crisis-type issues that are going to be able to really respond well to those calls for service. So there may be certain conditions where that call is transferred back to the 911 agency, and that might be when there's an immediate threat to life's safety or property.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any other questions from the council or commission? With that, I, oh, excuse me, yep.
I apologize. I thought of one. Scott, tell me, how do you handle people who speak something other than English? I know I was involved in a fender bender on Friday, and the, the person had really, couldn't communicate in English, and it took a translator on scene. I can't imagine what it's like at the, the call center when someone calls with Spanish, or you work your way down the list. So how do you interpret calls like that?
So we rely on technology, because we know we can't hire enough people to speak all the languages that are spoke here in Sioux Falls or beyond Sioux Falls. So we use a vendor. So we use a vendor that's, uh, that's called Language Line Services, and it's a pretty common, um, vendor that's used in South Dakota. And it takes about fifteen, maybe twenty seconds to take and connect that caller, um, with Language Line. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a pretty simple process. It's ba- basically conferencing in a, another vendor.
Great. If I could, just to, as a follow-up, do you recruit people who speak Spanish or the top language? I, I think we all are. Every organization is trying to add that, so they add some of that in-house. Do, are there incentives for someone who speaks a second language? Or is there a recruitment process that you give priority to that? Or how do you look for that?
Right. So we are always appreciative of those applicants that do speak another language because that is a benefit for our agency and it's a benefit for the community. So we always encourage those that, uh, um, that are interested in nine-one-one and can speak several languages to come check us out, apply with us, and, and we may have that position for you that, uh, I will help you provide that public service. But, uh, currently on staff, I can't think of anybody that's, well, I take that back. We do have at least one person that, uh, speaks more than one language.
Do you, or is the application process friendly for someone who English isn't their first language?
I think it is. Um, you know, there's always that availability. If, if people are not able to, to process app, application online, um, there's always availability for them to send us an email and then, you know, we can, we can have somebody interpret that email for us. Or, uh, if there's somebody that needs to stop down at our agency and have us help them with that process, I'm, I'm confident we could find the interpreters to help us with that process.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right.
Move to approve the budget?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
You do.
I have a motion as second on the county side to approve the Metro nine-one-one communications budget. Roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I have a motion on the city side, please.
Move to approve, Knight, sir.
Second call.
Move to approve, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers McCurus?
Yes.
Knight, sir?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Varonko?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Motion's passed on the city side.
Item number two is a joint budget hearing for Sioux Land Libraries. Good afternoon, Jody Fick. Nice to see you.
And good evening, everybody. I guess it is about evening. Um, I want to start my budget presentation by first thanking my colleagues in helping put this budget together. The finance team has been especially helpful, and I want to acknowledge Ann Land, who is here from our library board. So Sioux Land Libraries. So the purpose of Sioux Land Libraries is to strengthen our community both in Sioux Falls and throughout the county, especially supporting kids and families by creating inclusive senses of place. What does an inclusive sense of place mean? Well, an inclusive sense of place is a spot where everyone feels welcome. And we have worked especially hard at that in the library, in the training that we do with our staff, in what we call extreme hospitality, so that anyone who is coming in feels like this is a spot for them. We also provide resources on almost any topic, programming for all ages, and an outstanding staff who are committed to connecting people to information and each other. The mission of the library is connecting you to a world of information and ideas to enrich your life. And I would say that we live that in every moment. Um, we also deliver information, books, access to Wi-Fi, computers and the internet, quiet study places, learning, research, employment and career research, resources. Every week, I hear of another person who has gotten a job because they were able to use our computers to apply. Our staff has looked over their resumes and helped them with spelling. Uh, we, I have a, a gentleman who works for the city who wanted to get an advancement, and he used one of our resources called LinkedIn Learning to learn how to be a manager, and he was successful in his application. So we are there for the person who doesn't have a job, but we are also there for the person who just wants to advance. Our focus, because you can't do everything, even though we are there for all, but our focus is really in providing services and programs that will surprise and delight. We provide dynamic, flexible welcoming spaces, and I talked about that a little bit, but I wanted to share a little bit about how much our library is being used. You know, during COVID, libraries had to shut down. We reopened in a matter of six weeks, faster than most libraries across the nation. Those libraries now are seeing people come back in high, high numbers. The study room space that we are, that we have, use is up three hundred and fifty percent just for the first seven months of this year compared to last year. So not comparing during COVID, but kind of that twenty-twenty-one. Our meeting rooms are up a hundred and twenty-four percent. The foot traffic, just people coming in, is now up fifty percent. So people are coming back to these spots and using the resources. We also partner with other agencies and leaders in the community to provide enriching experiences. Last year, we did a new program with the Sioux Falls School District called Everybody Reads. What happened in the school, Sioux Falls School Districts even prior to COVID is that reading scores have been lowering. So the number of children who are making it to being able to perform a read at a third grade level at three, third grade has been decreasing. Well, Dr. Stavum has been like, how can we partner to hopefully make some changes in this? And she wanted to have a program with us where we could demonstrate that reading isn't just for that group of people. Everybody reads. And so during the month of, month of March last year, we had over three hundred and fifty books read by schoolchildren and public libraries who were willing to, to add their, their leaf, or to count their books, which was tremendous. I heard, um, that this program was especially successful in that there wasn't like a grade tied to it. It was all about reading for pleasure, reading for reading's sake, which is how, when you are doing things that you enjoy, that you actually make advancement. So I'm hoping that these types of programs will help with those reading scores. We also continue to adapt our library collections, services and technology. One of the things that we've been doing, um, at our rural branches is a program we call Expanded Access. And what Expanded Access is, is badge access into our buildings when the staff is not there. So we have used technology, over the years, we have made our libraries be more and more self-sufficient, so a customer can come in, get their hold, check the books out themselves, use the computers without a person there, and make use of those resources regardless of whether we have staff in the building or not. We have recently expanded that at both our Hartford and Crooks branches, and we are currently working on adding three additional communities because our communities in Garrett's and Colton and Humboldt are just really excited about having an added resource for those spots. The other area where we're working at is in expanding our access to digital collections. Prior to COVID, twelve percent of our circulation was digital, those downloadable eBooks and audio. We are now, last year it was running at eighteen percent, and for the first seven months of this year, we're now at twenty percent. So people using those types of collection is really important in our community. Our circulation of physical items remains very even, so there's not a lot of ups in that, but what we're seeing increases in, in our community is those digital resources. And then I want to talk about our people. The library is staffed by sixty-three, or will be staffed by sixty-three full-time people if you approve this budget. We currently have sixty-two full-time people and then another thirty-five part-time staff for a full-time of equivalent of seventy positions. This staff is extremely trained in how to treat people with respect, how to work with our homeless populations, how to incorporate literacy concepts into the storytimes that they do. They're highly trained. This budget has a request for one additional library associate. At the library, we are at the same staffing level as we were in two thousand and five. During that time, our population that we serve has grown from a hundred and seventy thousand to two hundred and forty-one thousand. Wow, that's a lot. But what we have done during that time is make use of technology to take over some of those tasks that required a lot of people, but now machines can do. So those cell check machines, those automated material handling machines that you guys approved in the budget last year, all of that makes it possible so that we can do more with our existing staff. But for this next year, what people are wanting is more programs, particularly in that preschool age group. So we are requesting an additional staff person to both help us with doing more preschool storytimes, but also because this position will be at the downtown library, help us with doing more instruction for the public in the use of computers. The, our computer use is up, at the downtown library is over thirty percent of our computer use of our entire system, and we have a lot of high demand for help with that. So the operating budget. The operating budget will total nine point seven, nine million, seven hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. This represents a two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar increase for the, the staff. That includes that position. It also includes a small pay increase for our part-time staff, and it also allows us to add a second summer intern. This past year, we had an intern that focused our efforts in outreach. With the growth of Sioux Falls especially, there are more people that did not grow up with a library experience. So it takes a little more effort to explain what are the benefits that you can get from a library. So we, we hired an intern this year that, that was concentrated on that, and we had double the number of contacts with people. And we think that that's a really important spot for us to do, particularly in the summer. So that's where we're going to put our efforts in next year if this budget is approved. There, we also are requesting an eleven thousand dollar increase for our security services. We do have a full-time security, um, guard at the downtown library. We have for many years. The contract was just renegotiated and is going up so that they can provide more benefits to their staffing and keep that pretty stable. Um, our relationship with Sioux Merchant Control has been excellent. The, when we have a real consistent security guard there, the, that makes an effort to actually know the customers that are coming in, it alleviates a lot of problems right at the door. So that is a very important piece of keeping our downtown library a spot that's good for all. Um, there's a ten thousand dollar increase for the digital collection, which I talked to you about already, about the increased demand. And then a forty-two thousand dollar increase in a variety of supplies and fuel and utilities, and a little bit extra for our reading programs. We have expanded our summer reading program and our winter reading program so that they, there is something for every age, so the entire family can participate, and that has been very well received. And then in our capital budget, the capital budget is where we buy all of our physical materials for the library. And I know in, on the slide, it says books, but it's books, it's DVDs, it's music, and it is now things like reading kits and discovery kits, where we put together materials that families can check out, like microscopes and things to look at the bugs in their backyard and all sorts of fun things that help expand your learning as a family. This budget request does include eleven thousand dollars that is coming from a donation that we received from the Jim McQuestion family in memory of his life, of his wife. Jim is giving the library twenty-two thousand dollars for Bookmobile service each year, and we are requesting to use half of that next year to buy books that will be specifically on the Bookmobile. He says, when the Bookmobile goes, the kids want this, very specific books, and they want them now. And since we only go to each location once every three weeks, we have to have the books on the truck. So that will give us some of those books. That will help. Um, shelving, we're requesting a hundred thousand for shelving. You might think, why would you need new shelving? Well, shelving does wear out, and we are still using some that was bought for the original downtown library back in nineteen seventy-two. And so we need to replace that. And we also need different types of shelving for, for putting some of these special collections on. We have switched from buying shelving for one location to we buy us the same style, and we move it between libraries as we need it, but it's time to put a little bit of an investment in and replace some of the old stuff. And then we are continuing to work on upgrading the AV systems in our meeting rooms. So if you have used them, you know that there's, that we need to keep working on this, and so this will help with getting some additional branches completed. And then a couple of micro, microfilm scanners. People still do look at microfilm, and we now have digital microfilm scanners that need replacement, but they get very, very heavy use by the genealogy folks and anyone who is doing research with Argus Leader. Because even though some of that is available online, not all of it is, so. So our budget request for this next year is for ten point seven million. The breakdown of that is nine million, three hundred and forty-one thousand and forty-seven dollars from the city and one million, four hundred and five thousand from the county. The county would be funding just at fourteen point two percent of the budget. This for the county is an increase of seventy-five thousand from the previous year. And for the benefit of, of our new members here, the county's portion of the budget does come from a specific library property tax mill levy that is assessed to any citizens who live in Minnehaha County but outside of the boundaries of Sioux Falls and Del Rapids. And that money can only be used for library services, and this budget request fits within the anticipated growth of that budget. The county auditor's office is estimating that that will grow by seventy-nine thousand next year, which may seem like I'm kind of a little tight, but we do have a year-end balance from this last year of four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, so there is room in that to still make sure that we are collecting at the same rate that the county would be paying it out. And that concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Jody. And since this is a public budget hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment or have questions on the library budget? And I would turn it over to the council and the commission. Are there any questions or comments? And I would turn it over to the council and the commission. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. McCosky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. First, thank you for highlighting the importance of that reading score before the third grade. I know that we spent a lot of money on both of these bodies on crime. There's been a lot of national research done on improving reading scores and making sure that we're doing preventative measures for helping kids succeed. So thank you for highlighting that work. If you could just-
Yeah, and just a little, because I am a data person. They estimate that seventy percent of the kids who are not reading at grade level at the end of third grade will either be in prison or on welfare. So this is a really significant thing. It has a long-term impact for our community.
If you could just highlight, real quickly, put a little meat on the bone. With this new additional position that you mentioned regarding preschool programming and efforts, what's currently not happening for citizens that will be happening by adding this position?
What's not happening is enough programming for all of the kids that want to have programming. So I only have enough staff to do so many hours. One program that we had started prior to COVID was called the Parent-Child Workshop. And in Parent-Child Workshop would run for a period of four weeks, and we would bring in families of ten to fifteen. And they would have one-hour sessions specifically with a professional from the community that would be focused on one aspect of child development. Could be hearing, could be teeth, could be social behavior. But that, that professional would talk with the families for just a short time, and then for the remainder of the time would interact with the families while they would play with different toys that we, educational toys that we've put into the room. And then that professional would be able to do like a one-on-one assessment with each of those families. Very effective at actually allowing parents to see, is my child at development level? Because they would have other children of that same age there. It also filled a social need in that many of these families had been pretty isolated, and they now developed friendships with other people at the library. The other programs that we plan to expand are baby storytimes and our toddler storytimes, which do a very similar thing, but we don't offer enough of those on the weekends. And so for your families that have, well, South Dakota is one of the highest rate of working moms and dads. That ability to come to our programs during the week is not as conducive. So we'll be able to add some additional.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
I just, Madam Chair. Thank you. I, I wanted to assure Sandy that I did renew my library card and all my fines are paid to date, so I'm good to ask questions at least this afternoon. Talk a little bit about the role of volunteers in our library system because we're being real, really diving in on the number of FTEs that we're adding this year, and we ask a lot of questions. Is a volunteer coordinator a better use of the time with a professional who can add that programming? Or does it need to be an employee as some of the services that we're looking to add?
Some of the program, I mean, there, we do use quite a few volunteers in the library. And that, the, our volunteer coordinator position is a part of our team librarian position. So we have kind of looked at things that can be coupled. And so I think that we are okay in, in terms of that at this time. And so-
No, I ask multiple questions and you can't figure out what I want. So I appreciate that answer.
But if anyone out there in the Siouxland area wants to be a volunteer at the library, we are accepting more.
Well, I just, I, I'm very appreciative of what the library service is doing, and it's so much more than just having quiet reading time. I, I saw one, a, a post this week about, talking about just providing reading time during school doesn't make kids better readers. It's the, i-if you can't read, it's like my golf swing doesn't get any better until someone helps me adjust it. If I keep, just because I do more repetitions, it just keeps getting worse. And it's the same with reading. So providing these extra services to teach kids how to read and read to grade level is as important as, okay, you have time to read, you have a book in your desk, and you can read during this time. If you can't read or don't have the skills or you're not comprehending the skill, so the rest of it is so much more important, what we do in our libraries and the community, that it's a, a wonderful experience for our young people. So, thank you.
Any additional questions? I'd look for a mo-, excuse me, Councilman Knight.
Sorry, Madam Chair. I think we just finished, was it Ronning that got remodeled?
Yes.
How are our facilities looking in general? Any other major projects on the horizon?
We don't have any other major projects for this next year, but we've been working with Tom Huber, I think, who's over here too, on identifying what the next branch would be. And it'll probably, there's some work that we need to do at the Oakview Branch, specifically at the entrance area. The door, that branch was built in two thousand and five, and the opening doorways just need replacement, and some of the cement work needs to be done. But we try to, unless there's something major like we needed to do at Ronning, keep things up. It's a whole lot easier to keep things up than to let them go and then have to do big.
And then I was interested in, a few years ago, you did mention that you were piloting the expanded access, and now it sounds like it's working pretty well, and so-
It's going very well. Yes.
It is. Okay. Yeah. So is, um, doing it in, in kind of the smaller town branches, is there a particular goal that you're trying to hit that they have a, a, a specific synergy versus, let's say, just picking a library in the city of Sioux Falls? Like what's, what's the value add or what's kind of your vision? Is it going to be all the libraries eventually, or is it certain targets?
Um, there are things that you have to take into consideration, that you have to have in place before you can do expanded access. First one is we need really, really good internet speeds to that location because we do a lot with security cameras. So that ability to, to see what's going on, you know, is, is required by that. So that's one of the first things. The other thing in, in the county is that all of our buildings are provided by the city that we're in. So we do have to make some modifications to that building, and we have to have the agreement of that community to make those modifications. But they see the benefit. You know, staffing is expensive. And if we can continue the same level of service, but then add times when people can come in and just browse the collection and pick things up, the things where they didn't need a staff member to help them with, then we've added a lot of access in that community.
And Jody, those rural libraries aren't open the same amount of hours that city libraries are, and so it's adding more access to people in the rural community that they don't have.
Yeah, they are open from ten to twenty-four hours a week, where our city ones are open sixty-three to sixty-seven hours a week. So.
That's what I was looking for. Is that's where the real power for that-
That's the real-
There is. Okay.
If there are no more questions, I would look for a motion from the county side, please.
That's my motion to approve. This is Jeff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Look for a motion for the city to approve.
Motion to approve. Cole.
Moved by Cole, second by Jensen. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers McCurus.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Varonko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Item number three is a joint budget hearing for the Siouxland Heritage Museums. Bill Hoskins. Good evening, Bill. We're almost at six o'clock, so it's definitely evening.
Well, good evening. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Siouxland Heritage Museum. The Siouxland Heritage Museum is dedicated to the experience of learning for our community, its family, and visitors through the collection, preservation, and interpretation of history. We currently operate three buildings. The Old Courthouse Museum, which is an eighteen ninety rigidsonian Romanesque courthouse. It is on the National Register of Historic Places. It is owned by Minnehaha County. We also operate the Pettigrew-Homan Museum, which is an eighteen eighty-nine Queen Anne home with two historic museum additions added in nineteen twenty-three and nineteen thirty-three. It's also on the National Register of Historic Places. It's owned by the city. Our third location is the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. It was opened in November of two thousand and eighteen and is the collection storage facility for the museum's collection and also the research center for the public who comes into the building to use our collections. Museum visitation in two thousand and twenty-one was just over fifty thousand. In the first six months of two thousand and twenty-two, we're up by fifty percent above those numbers. We were open approximately forty-six hundred hours in two thousand and twenty-one, open daily at the Pettigrew and the Old Courthouse Museum. Visitors in two thousand and twenty-one came from thirty-five states, five foreign countries. In the second quarter of two thousand and twenty-two, we had visitors from forty-six states and twelve foreign countries. Top states other than South Dakota, Iowa, Nebraska, Minnesota, Missouri, Wisconsin. Nothing really surprising. The interesting thing is the numbers are tracking very similar to our visitation pre-COVID, and we view that as a good thing. Staff oversees the care of a hundred and twenty thousand catalogued objects. They range in size from very small, things like a dime, to big things like the Faywood Flyer, which is the size of a small pickup. About three thousand objects per year are on exhibition at the Old Courthouse or at Pettigrew. And one of our big projects for two thousand and twenty-two was really to expand the public access to our collections management database and be, make those objects in storage in the collection more accessible to the public. And we've done that through a program called Task Perfect, and we're connecting it to our website. Anyway, we've increased from about ten thousand at the beginning of the year to about sixty thousand objects today, and we're hoping to get close to a hundred thousand of the hundred and twenty up by the end of the year. Museum education is a big part of what we do, our education program. In two thousand and twenty-one, staff presented about three hundred and eight programs for just over seventeen thousand people. We surpassed that number in the first six months of two thousand and twenty-two. Volunteers also presented about twenty-one hundred guided tours of the Pettigrew-Homan Museum. Our staff served twenty-nine K-12 schools in twenty-three school districts, including every school in Minnehaha County, and about thirty other organizations, daycares that we did programming for. Some of our top onsite programs, the Concert Series, which is Fridays at the Old Courthouse Museum, the Murder Mystery at the Pettigrew-Homan Museum that happens the end of January, and our Kids Activity Day Program, which is a make-and-take craft program that happens monthly at the Old Courthouse. Offsite, some of the top programs are the Civil War Soldier, Woodlawn by Lantern, which we do cooperatively with Woodlawn Cemetery, the historic walking tours of the historic neighborhoods in the community, and a program we call Pioneer Experience, where we have staff who dress up as a pioneer couple and go into the classroom and talk about what the pioneer experience was like. We have actually nine different exhibition spaces, six at the Old Courthouse Museum, three at the Pettigrew-Homan Museum. We try to open a new exhibit every quarter, and they're, they're on a rotating basis. Anyway. Museum rentals, we do provide rentals space at the Old Courthouse Museum at a limited basis at the Pettigrew and the Museum Resource Center. Last year, there were seventy-two rentals for just over thirty-nine hundred people. Most of those were ready, weddings and wedding receptions, but there were also family parties, business meetings, occasional judicial meetings. Primary, the biggest months for rentals were June and October last year. There is no consistency from year to year of what are going to be the busiest months, pretty much. One of our shining, uh, our, some of our shining stars are our volunteers. We rely on volunteers heavily to supplement the staff. We had a hundred and sixteen volunteers who donated over thirty-six hundred hours last year. Our volunteers are recognized annually in a volunteer program. During Volunteer Week, we have a volunteer banquet. We have awards. That volunteer program is funded independently of this budget by the Siouxland Heritage Museums Alliance, which is a private nonprofit friends group. And the reason I'm here tonight. The Siouxland Heritage Museums were created through a joint cooperative agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, June seventeenth, nineteen seventy-four. And Article Four of that requires that the museum board prepare and present an annual budget to the city council and county commission. My board chair, Jerry Beckler's here. If you have questions for Jerry, otherwise I'm going to dive in. The museum's budget is really six budgets or parts, and each one is a little different than the other. The, four of them are funded by government funds, by tax dollars. The museum operations budget, which funds most of our human resource staff these days, the maintenance budgets for the Pettigrew, Old Courthouse, and Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. Those maintenance budgets address utilities, custodial supplies, and, and minor repairs to the structures. Then we have two revenue budgets. One is the museum's special enterprise fund, which I deliver an annual report to you about a month ago, six weeks ago, and the museum store budget. And those are really, they're, the enterprise fund to account for revenues and expenses associated with the provisional rentals for programs for which a fee is charged. Also, sponsorships and grants to the museum all go through the enterprise fund and are accounted in that. The museum store budget really is a budget for accounting for revenues and expenses associated with operating the museum store. In two thousand and twenty-three, we're looking at a total budget of those six parts of a million, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, two thirty-four. The museum's operations budget is a budget that is funded jointly by the city and the county. It's about eighty-one percent of the total pie. And ninety-six percent of the operations budget is for human resources. The budget is going up. Primarily, the cha-, there are no new full-time requests. The number of part-time hours in the pool is not changing. But what has happened is there have been some pay, changes to the full-time pay matrix for Minnehaha County. One that happened in April of two thousand and twenty-two that will impact the budget of twenty-three and a proposed one for two thousand and twenty-three. Also, an adjustment in the base rate for our variable hour part-time employees also impacts what's happening in the operations budget. The Pettigrew maintenance budget is funded by the city of Sioux Falls for the Pettigrew that's owned by the city. Really, the city adopts that and determines that. It is administered annually by Minnehaha County. And really, the proposed budget has fourteen percent is professional services. The cone, the elevator guy who comes and inspects the elevator and the exterminator who sprays around the building. Repairs are about thirty-nine percent of the proposed budget. Repairs are about 39% of the proposed budget. Utilities, I'm hoping, are only 43%, but they've been going up. And in fact, all of the increase in this budget is for increased utility costs, energy costs. The Old Courthouse Museum budget, similar to the Pettigrew, funded by Minnehaha County for their building, adopted by the county, administered by the county, and we're asking for a small increase in that, primarily for increased costs in energy, electricity. And it's divided up very similar contractual or professional services for the elevator and security alarm system, repair, minor repairs, supplies, custodial supplies, and utilities, pretty much make up the entire budget. The Irene Hall is structured the same way. It is different because it is funded jointly by the city and the county. It is adopted in this joint budget hearing, administered by the county. I'm asking for quite a bit there. We are anticipating having, we have been having some increased maintenance costs at the Resource Center, and so I've increased the maintenance budget, also the increase in energy costs that we're experiencing everywhere. Then we get to the museum's special enterprise fund, which is the second-largest budget of those six parts. And it's really a revenue fund. If we don't get money coming in, we can't spend the money. It's a budget which is really the spending authority for that budget. It's what you're authorizing me to, is adopted in the joint budget hearing. It's administered by the county. It really includes all the money for educational supplies for educational programming, all the money for collection supplies for managing the collection, all the money, well, some money for marketing of those programs in the enterprise fund, accounting for the expenses associated with providing rentals, which includes part-time labor or full-time overtime for those extra hours during the rentals. And human resources, 41%, which is our summer interns, some part-time hours for the desk at the museum resource center, and 1/3 of the cost of the museum events coordinator and the exhibits assistant positions. The museum store is funded by revenue. It's a joint budget, and it's administered by the county. And one thing I did want, in 2022, we moved $10,000 that we'd made in the store and did a balance transfer over to the enterprise fund to help fund some of the programs that we're running in that. We'd like to plan to do that again in 2023. The significant changes in this budget are human resources. That's hands down the biggest cost, and it's basically the adjustments to the base pay and the increased energy costs that we're seeing in all buildings. In summary, we're asking for a budget of $1,891,234. That's all six parts. It boils down to approx. $819,794 for the city, which would be 44% of the total, $842,237 for the county, about 45% of the total, and then a revenue support from the enterprise fund and the store of 11%. That's my quick overview. Yeah, questions?
Thank you, Bill. And again, this is a public budget hearing on the Siouxland Libraries. Is there anyone who has a question or a comment on this presentation? Okay. Council members or commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry. Jerry, can you come up here, please? Sorry, you'll have to identify yourself and make your comment public.
Jerry Beckler, museum chair of the board. One of the things I think we really are concentrating on, it's an old facility in the Old Courthouse. There are 64 stained glass windows that are in there. Some of them are in poor shape. This last year, we started a program of updating, renovating five of those. They were removed, taken to Omaha, and done. So I think that's just something that Bill has done, but I just think everyone needs to be aware of that. At five a year, it's going to take a few years to get through, to get all of those 64 done, but the most pressing ones have been done. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
And I can give a little more background just to, we have 61 stained glass windows at the Old Courthouse Museum. Some are original, 133-year-old windows. Some are reproductions done in the 1970s when they were restoring the building at first. It's very difficult. Stained glass work is a real artisan work, and we found an individual who works, his shop's in Lincoln, Nebraska, but he grew up in Minnehaha County. He comes to Sioux Falls on a regular basis to see his father, and he can do five or six windows a year.
Okay.
Fit us into his schedule. So that's what Jerry's referring to.
Questions? Commissioner Bender.
Thanks, Bill. I was curious about your comment that your Irene Hall Museum Resource Center budget has a maintenance component. It's a relatively new building, so can you explain what kind of maintenance issues we're having?
We've been having some recurrent challenges with the boiler system, and it appears to be the control system. There are two boilers that switch back and forth. We've had some plumbing issues. We will probably need a budget supplement for that building this year because of storm damage in, on June 20th and July 5th, which we're still working through getting repaired.
Was there insurance available for that?
Yeah. Well, it's the county self-insurance, so there's a deductible of $100,000. Yeah. That's, so we're not, we're not in that category.
Okay.
We're at maybe 20,000 to get it repaired, but it's in great access of where the maintenance budget is, and we're just moving it up a little bit.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the museum? Mr. Berkowski.
Long ago, we had, this question, I guess, relates to-
Bronco, sorry. That's my first time pronouncing that name. Sorry.
I've been called far worse. The, with regard to rentals, and one thing a couple of years ago that was a little bit of a drag on getting more of those was that people were very eager, very excited to have Wi-Fi at their events, and we were not able to provide that. I know it's been a while. Has there been any progress on making that available to people who rent the facility?
Well, it's a good question. We've struggled with Wi-Fi, and no, we do not have public Wi-Fi in the building.
Just something going forward, I know that, you know, obviously, everything has a cost, and there are always a lot of logistical challenges, but I know it will help us to be able to expand the number of people who are eager to rent the facility.
I agree wholeheartedly with you. It, there's a lot of different, a lot more things than I ever thought were necessary to get through to make that happen.
Looking forward to the future, that maybe that's something we can all work together on to try to accomplish.
I agree. Yep.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair. Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Barth.
Let, age before beauty.
Star, but that's okay. You did it to him last time. We need to get together more.
Yeah.
One of the highlights at the museum over the course of the last year was, for me, was the acceptance of the Argus Leader's morgue. And would you just spend a couple of minutes of what a resource that will be for the community to be stored as part of the museum collection?
Sure thing. The Argus Leader is leaving their building, and they've been cleaning out. And I believe the Siouxland Heritage Museum has been a beneficiary of their largesse. I think the Siouxland Libraries got a chance to go through and expand, but the upshot is we got about 1,000 rolls of microfilm of the Argus Leader, which is great. We also got a large number of bound newspapers, the actual physical 3D, and there were some real gems buried in there, including, now I'm going to draw a blank, a newspaper, not the Argus, but from 1879 in Sioux Falls, bound newspaper printed on linen, fabulous resource for the community. So we had a bound newspaper collection. We've been able to infill all of our missing and probably have a real complete set. I understand the Siouxland Libraries were also able to infill, Jody's left, but their collection. And we are currently working on trying to get a deal where we can get the Sioux Falls Press, which the Argus bought, which was a competing newspaper on the other political side of the fence, scanned, digitized, and working with newspapers.com, it's ancestry newspaper.com, and a couple other organizations to get that done. And then there's probably the best part, we got their photo collection.
Okay.
Photo negatives and files where they have little pockets, and it's got Dean Karski's name on it and photos of him over the last 20 years and articles that appeared in the paper.
That's right.
And we're working through processing that stuff in, and we have really been focusing on that through the summer. But it's a huge project.
Very exciting.
And a fabulous collection. It really is a fabulous collection for the public, and we're really pushing to see as much of it as we can available online through the museum website. But anyway, thank you. That answers.
Counselor Starr.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, this is, and fellow elected officials, this is the last time I'll have to listen to this because I'll be done at the end of the year, and I'll remember this as the good old days when I got to listen to Bill's presentation. But, you know, the museum, like the library, is such an important part where we take our children born as savages and create citizens and adults out of them. You know, they will be able to go to the library and become better citizens, better parents, better people, and the same thing is true of the museum. And, you know, I had a dream of getting that archive facility done, and Bill and Michelle Urbanbach and I got her done. I have another dream, though, that I'm counting on you folks to help with, and that is to build our endowment to the point where the taxpayer doesn't have to spend their money on this because it'll be supported by an endowment sufficient to take care of all these costs. And I look forward to reading the Karski file.
And we do have an endowment at the Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. It was established in 1996. Current balance is just over 2.1 million, and it's, it's actually grown considerably in the last three years. Even this last year has been sort of a down year, but it's still grown considerably, and it is, the revenue from that endowment enters our budget through the museum enterprise fund and is accounted for and spent, so all the bills are approved by the commission.
Madam Chair, I have to say one more thing about that endowment. You know, we've had gifts of hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last few years, and Bill is certainly responsible for that, and it's wonderful.
Any other questions or comments on the museum budget? Thought I'd take a motion from the county side.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Connecticut City, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, call.
Second, McCorris.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmembers McCorris.
Yes.
Nightcert.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Varonko.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
And motion's passed.
Okay. This is an opportunity for public comment, as if there's anyone here that would like to speak. This is your time.
Motion to, oh.
If you would just give your name and address.
Dennis Algen, Sioux Falls. It's actually two years and four months ago that I moved here from the Seattle area, suburb south of Seattle. In that area, I don't think you'd want to get out of the car to go into a museum or a library. Underlying, underlying, your governance, your policies, your ability to execute your policies has kept a very orderly and safe place to live compared to many other communities. And I'm glad I got two or three government entities here because you've all had something to do with that. You've been making good decisions, making solid decisions. And I get a little scared during election time because I don't know where things might go. So you've done a terrific job, and one of the things that you did when the riots were about to start, which was June 1, or right in that area, you called the National Guard to get sufficient help to do the job. And every governor in every state can do this, but they didn't do it in Seattle. They didn't do it in Portland. They didn't do it in a lot of places. Now, I look at the grief that it's costing them. You know, that little chop zone in Seattle where they took away police protection, and they were being yelled at to call the National Guard, and they refused? What have they got now? Lawsuits. There were people living in that chop zone who needed those services. And when the one boy got shot who was innocent, heading for home, he's laying bleeding on the sidewalk, and the EMTs couldn't go in there in Seattle, that was a chop zone, and the guy bled to death on the street. Well, Seattle's starting to play, pay for that now, endless lawsuits. What happened afterwards, denigrating and, you know, defunding the police, they're paying now, and they're going to pay death a long time for the way they handle things, which is in total comparison, in a positive way, you're the positive, they're the negative. You're the positive. You did the right decisions. You made decisions, you executed them, and you didn't put up with any kind of, any kind of crimes. That's exactly what every city should do. So now, you've got a great city. It's- It's safe to go to the library here. It's safe to go to the museums. It's safe to enjoy what you've created. I signed my house deal on January ninth, twenty-twenty. Arrived here on April twenty-second, twenty-twenty, which by then, we were right in the middle of the pandemic. My house got done, because I wrote subject to completion, got done right on time. All the inspections got signed off right on time. I did this here in Sioux Falls. And then, it was kind of a bad time for a month or two, but by this time in twenty-twenty-two, you could live pretty normally here in Sioux Falls. You get all the services you wanted. Some of the businesses were being, which was their choice, you had to wear a mask, but you didn't have all these mandates. You saved your economy. Now you're the envy, the envy of the whole world. I get people talking to me from Canada, wanting to, you know, they're just down here just to see what it's like, you see? Everybody wants to move here now. You know, they won't all be able to, it's because of the great job you've done, the great decisions you've made. So as long as you don't fall back and make other kinds of decisions, you'll probably continue to be successful for the next two years, very successful, because it's just amazing how people from all over wish they were in South Dakota, wish they had your councils, wish they had your governor, wish they had everything you've got, because you've made good decisions. You've executed your policies successfully.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yep.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to have a public comment? Seeing none, I would take a motion from the county side for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Motion from the city to adjourn.
So move Jensen.
Second call.
Moved and seconded. We need a roll call, please.
Nope.
Can we do voice vote?
Yep.
Let's do a voice vote. All in favor of German say yes.
Aye.
All opposed, don't. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
[applause]